But when they throw stuff out, I don't give my homework. So I want to understand where it is just before now we're talking about the margins because these were districts that we're saying that we have to see average.
Okay Debbie, you ready?
And when I've talked to teachers, I get a mix back on.
I'm going to call the meeting to order for Tuesday, July 17th. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no end, just as for all.
Thank you. Can I have roll call, please?
Director Winskill.
Here.
Director Hines.
Here.
Director Leon.
Here.
And are we expecting Director President Cobb?
We are, expecting her and Director Viall is excused for tonight.
Thank you.
Okay. Move on now to acceptance of the agenda. Can I have a motion, please?
I move adoption of the agenda.
I second it.
Move the second, all in favors, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, ayes have it three zero. There's no recognitions tonight. We are going to move on to the superintendent's report on the budget.
So I have two reports. Roslyn's going to be second. The first one is I just came right here from a celebration at Salishan. They had the celebration of the opening at Heritage Bank, right there on the Salishan community. It was so much fun. There were so many community members there and the mayor spoke, the president of Heritage Bank was there. What a great celebration. Lister is a school that has the savings account that was started by THA and it was just an incredible result of what good partners come together. So it was great to see so many different community partners and the bank is going to be doing, helping, matching some of the money for the savings account for youngsters and THA is continuing, you know, to start the program. So it was really, it was really a lot of fun and so we should be proud of the kind of partnerships that are coming from our willingness to embrace them. It's been, it was great.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Roslyn?
Well, good evening. Good evening. Can you hear me okay? I can't hear me. Okay. We're going to be providing you with a brief budget presentation. It's really an overview of where we're at with the budget and there's three components of which we want to make sure that we're addressing. The first is we want to provide information so that we can inform the public and the board of where we are in this point of the budget processing. We have not completely processed the budget. We are continuing to work through that, but we are getting very close. Secondly, we want to address any feedback that comes from our budget hearing this evening. And thirdly, we want to discuss future engagement around the budget so that we can be sure to incorporate conversations as directed by the board at our last meeting. On, on helps. And off. There we go. So the first thing I want to talk to you about is our enrollment and this is a chart that we show every year. We have not showed you where we're at with our enrollment this year. We hire a demographer. Our demographer is Les Kendrick and he takes a look at the birthing trends and other enrollment factors that are used to develop a projection for where enrollments are going to be over the next several years. And he's been our demographer for a good 15 years. And when we look at his 10-year history, he actually has a really good percentage of calculating our percent of district-wide enrollment and he's been off by 1% over 10 years, less than 1% over 10 years. So we have a pretty fairly accurate representation of our demographics. Individual schools certainly fluctuate and that's more difficult, especially with our optional enrollment process to target. But we want to make sure that we have the public understand that we do have a pretty decent enrollment and projection process. What we're seeing, this is a very zoomed in look at our enrollment. We don't have quite this big of a dip, but if you look closely, what you'll see in 2018 is that we're going to grow by approximately 30 students. It's not going to be a significant increase in the next year, but we will see a pretty significant increase over the next five years, according to our demographer and based on everything that we know right now, which will be about a 2.5% increase over the next five years, 652 students. So something to look forward to. One thing that's discussed every year that I want to make sure I touch on real quickly is we say at the top of the slide that it excludes open doors and running start. We don't actually receive a significant portion of revenue associated with those, but for the purpose of historical trending, we exclude those groups and that represents about 684 FTE that we have in the system in addition to what we see right here. So. This is a quick overview of where we're at and I do have a little caveat up in the right-hand corner that figures are not finalized. And really that applies to all of the numbers that you'll see in this presentation. Our intent is, first of all, we can't control when the board meetings fall and so we're trying to get through the budgeting process and this is just where we're at at this point in time, so they're not finalized. We're not ready to say that this is what we're intending to do. But I feel pretty strongly about the revenue figures that we have in the budget. We've been working on those since April. The expenditure components are probably the more variable pieces at this point. And what we're seeing in local revenues, if we look at 1718 adopted to 1819 adopted, is a variance of close to $26 million. In the basic education component, that's the money that we have to do all teacher salaries and regular expenses associated with the student day. We will have an increase of $39.95 million. In our state categorical programs, that's special education, transportation, ELL, highly capable, certificated, I'm sorry, career and technical education, we'll have an increase of close to $15 million. And then when we look at our federal and other local sources, it's close to $2 million. That'll include grants, local sources that were fund balance, our savings account money, and then the one-time allocation that we received from the state of 12 million. So overall, we do have an increase in revenues in the 1819 year of $43 million. When we start looking at our expenditures, what we're seeing in our expenditures for salaries and benefits is an increase of nearly $22 million. That includes a projection of 3.1% for all salary groups at this point, although we're still in bargaining, so there's no final numbers on those. We won't have final numbers probably until after we've completed the adoption of this budget, as well as any salary increments where people move from step one to step two to step three on the salary schedule and any additional hires that we've made through the process of the budget. So that's all included in that number. And then additionally, we have supplies, materials and operating cost expenditures in excess of $13 million that we will increase. And those are one-time costs. At a future, at a future budget presentation, we'll be able to detail those out very specifically. I can think of a couple of big ones off the top of my head. One would be a curriculum and instruction investment of $3 million. There's some security, in, security cost increases that we've incorporated into that as well. What we're anticipating at this point, as far as our fund balance impact, last year we planned to use close to $10 million of fund balance to balance out our budget. This year, we're down to $1.7 million. So it's a significant decline in what we're planning to use out of our fund balance. We no longer have the savings resources to be able to continue to provide a higher level of service with a fund balance dollars. When I look at the specific legislative impacts, this is what's happened based solely on what happened in the legislature. We have some pretty significant components here. Our basic education allocation has increased, but we also had an expenditure increase associated with it. So we'll have a revenue column, we'll have the expenditure column. Under the revenues, $42.75 million. Those are the salary dollars that we'll be seeing coming in for regionalization, the 1.4% salary increases or revenue increases that we're seeing from the state, as well as health benefit. Actually, I take that back, that's all broken out. Those dollars were given to us by the state to offset local expenditures. So we were losing our levy dollars and gaining in resources from the state so that we could stop relying on local dollars and start relying on state dollars. Unfortunately for Tacoma, when we look down to the levy column or the levy row, we'll see that we lose $29 million. We are not going to be able to sustain our salary increases year over year past this year. This year, we'll lose half of our levy. Next year, we use another half. So you see a $29 million decline here. We have another $25 million decline coming just from the levy next year, outside of any maintenance level growth or anything like that. So when we talk through with the board and with the public, the types of issues that we're seeing with our budget, these are the types of things that we're seeing. We're seeing that we're going to have a significant decline in our levy dollars next year and we'll be needing to try and offset that. Additionally, what you'll see is the traditional, the traditional issue of, like if you look at the retirement, we'll get revenue of $150,000, but the expense associated with it is $214,000. So we continue to have those deficits for any increases that the state requires us to provide to all staff. We fund 400, let me get it right, 479 staff beyond what the formulas drive currently from the state. So anytime an increase happens beyond that, we have to pick up the cost of that for 479 staff. Same thing with the healthcare. We receive $587 million, but we're expending 633. For the class size, we've added 20 staff for class size. If we don't add class-sized staff, we will lose class-sized dollars, starting with the 18, excuse me, starting with the 1920 year. So we're trying to make an investment and get ourselves in a better position so that we don't lose resources next year. And then additionally, if you look at the paid sick leave and family leave, the acts have provided us with no revenue, but they come with an expense associated with them. We will start paying a tax for, it's called 5975. It's a family leave act. That expense will start in January of 2019 and we will pay almost half a million dollars over the next fiscal year for that. Additionally, we have our one-time hold harmless dollars and then we have categorical increases. And I, under the expenditures, it looks a little funny. We have added about $6 million of new expenditures, primarily in special education and CTE. Under the categorical expenditures, we have taken $1.8 million of indirect revenues and moved those over out of the categorical programs and into basic education so we can use those dollars more freely. So we've maximized our indirect rate. And then the $7 million that you see there is revenues, or excuse me, expenditures that we've shifted out of our regular basic education program into those categoricals. So there's been shifts associated with that. I'm going to stop for questions because I see that there may be a question.
Does anybody have a question at this time?
Okay. Thank you very much.
I just got a text from Director Cobb and there's a horrible accident on I-5, so she's stuck in there. She's not sure when she'll get here, so I just wanted to make sure everybody knew.
And actually, I, do you have a question? On the fund balance, what does that represent as a percent? And would you remind me what our minimum amount is?
So I have a slide on fund balance. Would you mind if I hold your statement too? Okay, thank you. We're doing lots of funding shifts and this is representative of some of the things that we're having to recode and restructure in the system. As I talked about in our last budget presentation, we're going to have to identify levy expenditures. Again, none of these figures are finalized. This is a draft of what it could look like or where we're headed with it. We've identified some expenditures associated with the $12 million that we're receiving for the legislature as a one-time temporary fix to help us through this year. We've identified approximately $67 million that we will try to use to fund levy enhancements and LEA enhancements under the enhancement categories required by the state. We've shifted some money into CTE from our basic education program. We've moved some things into tech. We've moved some things into title and LAP. We've also, which are not represented here, moved some things in to ELL and highly capable, although we just didn't get to the point where we could say exactly how much each of those are yet. We're still working through those calculations. So this represents close, oh, 60, 70, 80, almost $90 million of things that we've had to shift around in the finances. One of the biggest issues that we will have as we continue to build budgets in the future will be compensation funding. Right now, we only receive revenue for formula-driven staff. Everything else comes out of our local levy dollars, which are being depleted or being decremented by the new state law. If we look at our 2017-18 salary funding for certificated instructional staff, we received a revenue of $36,521 per staff. That's not a specific number. There, it actually would increase or decrease depending on where people were placed on the salary schedule. Our average salary in 1718 was $74,800 for a certificated instructional staff member. So, but depending, the revenue just depends on where the staff member was placed. In 1819, that changes significantly. In 1819, the funding is based specifically on where people, I'm sorry, on the average salary. It no longer looks at what types of experience they have and we just get a flat amount. So when we look at the certificated instructional as an example of salary funding for the 1819 year, we'll receive $73,000 roughly for each staff member in certificated group. Our current average salary is 74.8. So the resources that will be coming in for the 1819 year for just the formula-driven staff will know, will not be able to cover the cost of our current staff, let alone any type of increases, any type of step increases, any negotiated benefits, whatever it is that we're providing beyond what we currently fund. So that is a struggle for us that we're trying to work through. And when I say that we have funding, no funding for those non-formula staff, again, we have 479 of them. And so anytime we have an increase in salaries, anytime we have an increase in benefits, anytime the state requires us to have an increase in salaries or benefits, that's a cost that the burden, a burden that the district has to bear alone. There's no additional state resources to cover those. Some of the factors that apply to our salary funding, and just different districts have different circumstances. For us, there's a regionalization factor that's basically something that the state put in place to help drive a certain amount of revenues off to districts. That's how I would categorize it. I'm not sure how they would categorize it, but please hear that that's my personal opinion. The 12% that we will be getting isn't representative of anything specific to Tacoma. Federal Way gets 18% and they're just, you know, a few miles away from us. And university plays get zero and they're pretty much within our limits of a city. So I, I'm not sure that I understand necessarily the rationale behind it or what the implications are. I just know that we've been applied a 12% regionalization and that provides us with our salary from the state of $73,000. They also eliminated the staff mix, which we talked about, which is the subsidy for more experienced staff costs. The state average for staff mix was 1.53 and Tacoma's rate was 1.54. So we have a more experienced staff than the statewide average, which means that if they're funding based on the statewide average, we naturally have a decrease in funding associated with the costs that we have, the burden that we have for costs. And then the state also applied a factor for implicit price deflator. The implicit price deflator is similar to what a cost of living adjustment would have been. They've come up with a different methodology. They're no longer relying on a state salary schedule, so there's no such thing as a cost of living adjustment, so to speak. There's nothing in the language that speaks to that, but they do provide us with a revenue increase that's the implicit price deflator. Excuse me.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
In your 1718 certificated instructional salary funding, that number is 36,000 and then for 1819, it jumps up to 73.
Yes.
How is that, could you explain to me that big difference?
Right. And so the, when I say that, the 36,521 is the base. That's if you have zero experience. And so if you are someone who has 30 years of experience, let's say, that 36,521 would potentially be, I don't know, $78,000. So we might get funding of $78,000 for somebody who has a greater level of experience as opposed to what we see here.
Good. And 1819 was the average?
Correct.
Is that what you mentioned earlier?
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
I just have a clarification too. So on staff mix, you said 1.54 is what we're doing now?
That's our staff mix.
That's our, yeah, it's our staff mix. So what was the 153?
That's the statewide average. So we're higher than the statewide average.
Okay, so are they compensating for that then at all? I mean, does it go down to 1.53 because it's a state average? Are we only losing that percentage or are we going to like 1.0? I mean, I don't, what are we doing with staff mix?
Staff mix goes away. It doesn't exist.
It doesn't exist.
Yeah, they, they came, they came up, the legislature came up with a rationale as to the staff, the average salary is X and then you get to add regionalization and the implicit price deflator to that and that's the amount of revenue that you'll be getting regardless of where. So if we had every single person sitting at the top end of our salary schedule, we would only get the average. We would lose all that difference. We would have the, all that revenue loss in between.
Well, that's what, that's what I was thinking, but what is, I guess, I'd like at some point to kind of see like a chart of, you know, every salary, kind of a salary schedule, what would happen? Because I think this is such a huge issue that should be worked on with the legislature. We don't want to have to be hiring brand-new teachers every year when we have, you know, seasoned staff.
So you want to know what it costs us?
Yeah.
Because we have a more mature staff?
Well, I know that, I do know we get compensated for that because I've always told people that in the past, but going forward, my concern is that we always are going to then maybe hire people with no experience.
It would be to our benefit to hire people with no experience.
Exactly. Financially, but not, not educationally.
Financially.
Wouldn't be an educational bonus.
Financially. I would also say.
Not be a bonus, so.
Sorry. We aren't going to discriminate based on what type of experience you have. That's not in our nature.
To me, that's a huge issue that we need to really work on the legislature on that issue.
Right.
So, okay.
Debbie, a question?
Oh, sure. Go ahead.
With respect to the regionalization factor, so if I heard it correctly, we received $73,000 because we are arbitrarily or unbeknownst to us, put into the 12%.
Correct.
And so if we were put into the 18%, then we would have.
An increase.
Roughly $5,000 more.
Sure.
And so is that an issue that we can take to the legislature? I would want to know why Federal Way is receiving 18% and we're not.
Yes, we absolutely can and we're developing our legislative asks now, so I think that that's something that we can certainly incorporate in.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I think you can resume.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Unless anyone has another question right now. Okay.
Thank you. Moving on to our current send again, I would just want to put the caveat out there that this was, this is a living, breathing document. We're still in the process of adjusting it. This number did change this morning. We've actually, the management exempt staff, as we go through and just try to tick and tie and make sure that we've incorporated everything, management and exempt staff is actually down 3.45 staff and so the grand total's 34.03. So, and this number, these numbers will potentially not stay the same. We're still processing through. But bus drivers, there was no change. Management and exempt staff have declined 3.45 and it's not like I can give you three positions that we eliminated. We made probably 25 or 30 different changes across the course of a year, ins and outs and the outs resulted in a 3.45% decline. With the custodians, I have a caveat on that. We did add five custodians. Two were for the new ELC, Environmental Learning Center out at Sammy. That's a brand-new building and so we have to staff that with some custodial support. And three were for across the system. We had some buildings where we were shy on being able to meet the same expectations as where we're at with other buildings. And so it's little ticky pieces here and there, 0.125 here, 0.4 here, 0.3 there, that we've made adjustments over the year. And then eight of those FTE are actually a shift that we did in our bargain with the custodians at the end of last year. They were, it was too late to make that into the budget, but we ended up hiring custodians as full-time employees as opposed to putting them in a temporary position. We would call it a temporary position, but we were offering them full-time employment as a temporary employee for a short period of time. And it became very difficult for us to entice people to come and work for us because they had this 90-day timeframe when they didn't have benefits and even though we were going to give them benefits in 90 days anyway. So we decided to eliminate that and we just hire the people in now. And so we're having an easier time in hiring people and it's making it a more appetizing position for them. So that, those eight FTEs that we've added are not technically a significant cost for us. We just have to be able to build those in. The food service was relatively no change. Maintenance, no change. Our office professionals did decline by four FTEs. I do believe some of that has to do with our technology reorganization that's in process now. So I can't speak to which four people those were. Again, I would say it's probably a host of a number of changes, but if there's detail that you want behind any of this, I can provide that. Paraprofessionals, a short, a small gain. Principals, there was no change. In the end, we have the same number of principals this year as we did last year. The professional technicals, again, while there's a significant increase there, a lot of that has to do with our technology reorg and some ramping up that we're doing in our new technology levy. And then security, we've added two staff members in security and teachers, 19.84. So right now, we're looking around 34 FTEs that we've added to the budget.
Debbie had a question?
Sure. Scott has this question?
Couple of questions. When you, when we're talking 101 principals, on how many campuses?
57, roughly.
Those would be principals and assistant principals.
So we're ballpark about 1.5, a little less than 1.5 principal and assistant principal per campus?
You know, so there's several elementary schools that don't have an assistant principal, so it probably doesn't, you know, so average-wise, that might work, but you know, there's a difference in the average at secondary from elementary.
Sure. And then management exempt, what do those positions entail?
So that's anywhere from the deputy superintendent to the financial analysts that we have, that all of the positions that you see here. The ELL directors, program directors, level directors, those types of positions.
Do we have the number broken with just management?
We can provide that.
I would appreciate that.
Absolutely. In a Friday report, I can provide you with the positions.
Yeah. What, what I'm trying to drive out is ratio and then look to best practice.
All right.
To see where we fit. So are we, are we aligned with other districts and industry standards or are we above or below that ratio? Thank you.
Okay.
So here is the fund balance that Director Hines referred to. So what we see is our savings by year. This is the amount of money that actually went into our savings account, our fund balance over the last several years. So in 1314, it was 1.6 million, then roughly 8 million, 10 million. Last year, we did not put any new money into our savings account and we had a plan for that. We knew that we were saving way too much money and that those dollars were not going to current students and going to support current students and so we indicated that we would no longer do that. Our target, generally speaking, is a 1% savings and that's just to help us with reserves, make sure that we're not over-expending, make sure that we're doing a good job of, it's a $420 million budget right now. 1% is $4 million. There's a lot of, there's not a lot of flexibility in $4 million. So where we're at right now is we're pretty close to our target. We are looking at saving possibly $3 million. I'm not sure that we will actually get to that point. I think that it's a fluctuation that happens from now until August. We won't have a good number until August. That's because there's, we're still spending out of that budget. So that's a target for right now. With that $3 million, we will have 6% in our reserves. Our required reserves are 5%. So we will just be a smidge above what is required. It's, it's actually a pretty tight place to be. When you look at the 1819 plan, we're not going to use the $5 million that we had been using before in just general expenditures. We will continue to use some fund balance for both curriculum and instruction purposes as well as carryover. That's pretty standard. That's money we save from certain categoricals and move over into the next year. And then we do have a thought to potentially increase the reserves just by 2 or 3 million if we can, to try and put us in a better position for that 1920 year where we're going to be losing a significant amount of money. But with the additional revenue that we're receiving from the state, that 5% also grows. And so the amount of money that we have that's available for general activities significantly declines and more of it goes into that 5% reserve. So you'll see that red line is ticking up and this is where we intend to be in our fund balance when it's over. Does that answer your question, Director Hines?
It does. And what is the industry standard for minimum reserve?
Practice in most districts is between 3% and 5% and it fluctuates from district to district. I would say that we are on the lower end of the percentage of reserves that we have compared to the top 10 school districts.
And how does the 12 million, what the legislature described as the one-time hold harmless? I describe it as. hold harmless, I describe it as Robin Peter to pay Paul, how does that then impact our reserve fund? So let's assume that if we take them at their word, it says a one-time hold harmless, not a two-time hold harmless, what happens on that second time?
In relationship to the fund balance?
How do we cover that?
We have to make reductions in force and/or significant reductions in our discretionary. There will be no significant pot of money in the fund balance unless we put in reserves over the next year.
Because that would represent, if we're tracking to have twenty-seven-and-a-half million dollars in fund balance, to lose twelve million, that's forty-ish percent of our fund balance.
The twelve million...
We would have to get creative with other ways, because then we would fall below our policy.
Correct.
But isn't this over and above the twelve, isn't going into the fund balance?
I think that what Director Hines is really saying is at some point, you have to address the twelve million dollars and how it's going to impact us, and if we don't have the reserves capable of fixing the twelve-million-dollar issue, it's actually more than twelve million dollars, what are you going to do, and the only way to do that is to cut expenditures.
Okay, any other questions right now?
Just the six percent reserve of, is that the total budget, percent of the budget?
It's six percent of the budgeted revenues.
Okay.
Okay, I, we did prepare a four-year budget overview, we just wanted to give a taste of what it could look like, this, again, numbers are not finalized, I did find an error down, we transposed a number when I was putting it in last night on the expenditures for eighteen-nineteen, that number of four-seventy should balance to the first glance that we did in the beginning of the presentation, so I apologize for my error there, but what you'll see is, if you look at the revenues, right now, we're at four-hundred-and-sixty-four point eight million dollars of revenues anticipated for the eighteen-nineteen budget, we will see a decline at a minimum, four-hundred-and-forty-one million to the next year, so we're still working through, this isn't quite finalized, I just wanted to give you a preview of what it looks like, and then we're forcing our expenditures to balance to our revenues here so that we can see an example of what the expenditures might look like, how the expenditures might look different in the future. And we, just to refresh, we will have to prepare a four-year budget, we will do that in a system, it won't just be a random spreadsheet that we're doing, it'll take data and some estimation of what you think your revenues might grow and what you think your expenditures might grow by, and then that will help us determine what to report off to the state, but we will be required to report that to the state this year. So I know that we've talked about these slides before, and so I will touch on them exceptionally briefly, but we do have some key issues with what was passed in the legislation around twenty-two forty-two, and specifically with the levy, and we keep going back to the levy because it's probably the easiest solution for us, but our levy loss was too great, and the inequity that was created in the legislation with the two-tiered system puts Tacoma in a particularly difficult position. We will also be losing local effort assistance, that's the subsidy that's provided for property poor districts. What that looks like for us, oh, this is, and, and, we also lose flexibility thanks to the additional categorical dollars that we're receiving, so we lose levy, which has free restrictions or limited restrictions on it, we gain categorical, which has many restrictions on it, and we put ourselves in a position where forty percent of our budget used to be free dollars or available dollars to do the things that we thought were good for kids, and that's going to be going down to twenty-one percent, we will have far less capability of making decisions about how we spend our money and what types of things we want to support than we've had in the past. Additionally, what we're seeing in other districts is some districts, like Lake Washington and Issaquah and Seattle, can collect over two-thousand dollars per student, and I don't believe that the students in those districts are any better or worse off than our students, I don't believe that those students have any more resource needs than our students, but we're only able to collect twelve-hundred-and-ninety-seven dollars per student, and that's criminal in my mind, it's unacceptable and inappropriate, and so we believe that this is a good approach to go back to the legislature and talk to them about how they change the structure of the system to provide more equity and more parity. If anything, our students should be getting more, because we have great needs, especially when you look at the free and reduced lunch percentages, here in Tacoma, we're closer to fifty-eight percent, in Puyallup, thirty-two, in Yakima, seventy-two, and all of these districts will be able to collect up to fifteen-hundred dollars because the state will subsidize us up to fifteen-hundred dollars, but there's still that disparity between the fifteen-hundred and the twenty-five-hundred in some districts. So what that also boils into is, without those levy dollars, that puts us in a position where next year, we lose money, and when we lose that money and we keep the expenditures that we have, it creates a gap, and any gap means reductions. So briefly, I want to touch on what's coming up, we have currently on our budget website, if you go to departments, excuse me, on our district website, you go to the About tab, Departments and Programs, Budget, there is a budget survey that can be taken by anyone who wants to provide feedback through that method, and if you want to participate in a public forum, we will be having two public forums, one on July twenty-sixth at Mount Tahoma at six p.m., one on August second, and here in this room right here at six p.m., and our intent is to hear what people have to say about our budget, and we welcome that feedback and information regarding that. Subsequent to that, we will take back the feedback that we have and work with our superintendent and cabinet to develop a final budget plan for adoption on August twenty-eighth after a hearing. And then in the fall of this year, I will send you information in a Friday report on an upcoming plan to develop a budget advisory committee and what that would look like from our perspective, and you can provide feedback on that. And I thank you for your time.
Okay, any other questions, board members?
One more.
Director Hines?
On slide twelve, I would be interested to crosswalk the regionalization factor and understand who is receiving the twenty-four percent and the eighteen percent?
Sure thing.
Do we know, we have no...
I know Lake Washington is eighteen percent.
Yeah.
And Bellevue is eighteen percent, and Seattle is eighteen percent.
So I would appreciate just perhaps this slide
Yep.
With an extra column that has the regionalization factor, and then I'd like the legislature to explain why Lake Washington gets more money per student, why they get the benefit of the regionalization factor, and I'd like to start with our delegation to explain it to us, and then work with our lobbyists to figure out how we get these questions answered, and I think this is the time to get those questions answered because it's election season, I don't want people that are elected to promise that they're going to go back in the off-year and fix the problem, I'd like to know what they, as they're on the stump, what they plan to do to fix this right now, because next year, being in a budget deficit with them not feeling the same sense of urgency that they may feel being out there running for office, I think we lose some leverage, and I would like them to be fully engaged with getting us to yes as quickly as possible.
We are, I'm working with our advocate, Charlie Brown, to set up one-on-ones with our legislators right now.
Okay, thank you.
Director Leon, do you have any questions?
Well, just, it seems like these other districts have more powerful lobbying efforts, or do their boards and teachers go to Olympia more often to advocate for their money, is that essentially what we're saying?
No, I don't think that's it at all, we, to be honest with you, you know, Russell and I have been down, it really was the arbitrary nature of an allocation, and they explained to us that they knew there were going to be winners and losers, but it accomplished what they wanted to do, which was to reduce reliance on the levy, and there are only a few districts that were negatively impacted, the one that was the most negatively impacted, which is why we got twelve million dollars for one year, was Tacoma, and so, you know, there is no, you know, no, it definitely wasn't lobbying, in fact, the reason we got the twelve million is we were down there saying, you know, how can you let this go, that we've gotten into this situation, so...
I think part of it maybe was that we grandfathered two increases, and our levy rate was like thirty-two percent, and some of these other districts were, it was twenty-four, so I have a feeling that had something to do with it.
It was pretty much evenly, go ahead.
I agree, I agree with that, Director Winskill, I think that we were in a situation where we had been collecting more than other districts over a period of time, but look at the good resources and what we've done with those dollars, and to have that essentially stripped from our abilities, I think is...
So we weren't targeted because of our number, but that's why we got the biggest loss.
Correct, we had a larger impact.
Yeah.
No, I wasn't implying that.
You're right, we weren't, yeah.
So I have a question about the seventeen students, you know, the smaller class size, that, does that go into effect next school year, or do we have money in this budget to enact that?
They are providing us with revenues, they are providing us with an allocation as though we have a class size of seventeen to one, and I would emphasize, a class size of seventeen to one doesn't mean that you have seventeen kids in a classroom, and we are provided with an allocation, not written in stone, this is how you have to do it, we are able to, it's, the calculation that they are using to determine whether or not we meet the criteria is they're taking everybody who is coded into a basic education, teacher coding, and calculating it that way, so we can use floating teachers, we can use our special education teachers, we can use our specialist teachers, they all count towards seventeen to one. But yes, we are receiving funding associated with that, and if we do not meet the threshold based on that calculation in the eighteen, in the nineteen-twenty year, we will have a loss of revenue.
Okay, so I have, here's something I'd like to look at, I know that we don't have the space for seventeen to one, like they would like us to have for case three, correct? But if there is space available in some schools and we could make that happen in some schools, I think it would show good faith towards working towards that, and I would really like to look at that as an option in our budget, and I don't know if it's too late in this budget cycle to do, how much planning it takes to do that, but, you know, we did, in the past, we have had some small class sizes, about seventeen to one, at some schools in the district, we did do away with that for a while, but, anyway, I'd like to look at that.
Yeah, we can talk more about it?
Okay. Is that just a conversation we could have later?
Yes, definitely.
Okay.
And we, you know, we have, we have had discussions and strategy about different kinds of, you know, different strategies we could do to start to implement without, you know, without classes, without being discriminatory, you know, about some classes, so we have had conversations, so we need to probably discuss that further with the board.
Okay, and so we're coming to the end of our questions, I don't know if you have any questions on the budget?
I was listening on the way in.
She was listening.
So I don't have any questions, but I just, I'm going to echo Director Hines's request for that slide with the regionalization factors, I think it would be really helpful, but thank you.
Excellent.
I apologize for being late, accidents on both sides by five.
So now we're moving into the public hearing portion, so do you want to take over from here?
I can.
A follow-on question to an issue that you were raising, so when we get into class sizes and the potential need for more space, does the legislature understand then why it's so important to move to a simple majority for the passage of capital bonds, so that they're potentially putting school districts in a position where they're telling us we have to have more space but not providing us with an opportunity to raise the revenue to create that space?
I don't think you really want me to answer that question, do you? I think, I mean, it's a great statement, I don't know what they understand or don't understand related to that.
We have not seen a significant movement to change that law that allows for the simple majority, nor have we seen a significant movement on increasing the capital budget to support that need.
So then how are we supposed to afford abiding by the law?
There are a number...
We just haven't raised that conversation with them.
We've raised it, it's been part of your legislative agenda to increase capital funding sources, there are a number of unfunded mandates in the field of education.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item seven, public hearing, seven point one, adoption of the twenty-eighteen-nineteen budget.
It's, that's the hearing title.
Oh, sorry.
It's just a hearing on the budget.
Yeah, hearing on the budget. Though the Board of Directors of Tacoma School District will hold a public hearing regarding the twenty-eighteen-nineteen budget, anyone may appear and be heard for or against any part of the proposed eighteen-nineteen budget. A copy of the proposed resolution is on file in the Budget Office at the Central Administration Building, and a copy will be furnished to any person who may request it. Approval of the resolution to adopt the twenty-eighteen-nineteen budget is scheduled at the board's regular meeting to be held on August twenty-third, twenty-eighteen.
I want to just make one comment, you said August twenty-eighth earlier, so, but it is the twenty-third?
I did, you know what?
Yeah, so I want to double-check on that.
I've got some kind of mental block about it.
Okay. Okay.
Is there any?
Yeah.
Anybody refer to...
We should ask if there's anyone else commenting on the budget.
These aren't budget comments. Is there anyone who wanted to make comment on the budget tonight? It's not specific on the cards that we have. Going once? Okay, moving on to item number eight, members of the public wishing to address the board. School board members encourage public participation, your civil input is appreciated. If you'd like to address the school board, follow these steps. Please complete a citizens' request to speak card, which is located at the back of the auditorium, submit the card to the school board secretary prior to the start of the meeting, cards submitted after the public comment period has ended will not be considered at this session. The superintendent will call your name when it's your turn to address the school board, please speak into the microphone, you may have up to three minutes to share your comments, or if there are a large number of speakers, time may be limited at the president's discretion. You'll have three minutes to speak, and you'll get a morning when you have one minute left.
First speaker, Jenny Fowler, followed by Grant Ruby.
Good evening, my name is Jenny Fowler, and I'm representing the para educators, and after hearing the talk today, I just want to say that the average classified staff member in Tacoma Public Schools makes over fifty-two thousand dollars, and I don't know anybody who makes half that amongst the paras, so some people must be doing pretty well. When the legislator, legislature designated additional funds for salaries, I believe their intent was to fund raises that would go to benefit students by helping people work direct, who are working directly with the students, and that would be the definition of para educators. Paras work directly with students from the start to the finish of the day at all levels, from preschool to community transition. We work with all students, especially with the neediest of our students, we help teaching staff in a myriad of ways to enable them to do the best for students, and yet our salaries haven't kept up. But much worse than that is that our hours keep getting cut. When I started in the district, all paras worked seven or eight hours a day, and while the wages weren't high, you could make a career of being a para, not anymore. Now the district tries to balance the budget on the back of paras, and paras have become part-time employees. There's so much wrong with that. If you look at the job postings, you'll only find para jobs from four to six-and-a-half hours a day. Not only is that not a livable wage, but it hurts our students by reducing coverage and eliminating time to collaborate with teachers about the needs of the students, plans for the day, and expectations from the paras. I would encourage the board to take a close look at that.
Grant Ruby, followed by Liz Fortson.
Good evening, I'm Grant Ruby, math teacher at Lincoln High School and Lincoln Zone rep on the TEA Executive Board. I have spoken at school board meetings regarding school districts around the state that have settled on double-digit raises for their educators, that is not what I want to speak to tonight. Instead, I want to share my financial story. I just finished my fourth-year teaching at a salary point of just over sixty thousand dollars. After paying for benefits, retirement, et cetera, I take home a little more than three thousand dollars in pay. My rent is right at the average for a one-bedroom in Tacoma at twelve hundred dollars. I have four hundred and eighty-three dollars in student loan payments, and about a hundred each for my phone, internet, and power and water. In case you're not keeping track, I'm already at nineteen hundred and eighty dollars. But I haven't accounted for the two-hundred-dollar car payment, my credit card payments, groceries, insurance... groceries, insurance, et cetera. And I didn't yet mention the money I spend on my classroom each month throughout the school year. When I add all my expenses, I do not have even one hundred dollars left to save or for entertainment. I recently polished my resume, because I am unsure if I will be able to afford to continue teaching in Tacoma. Districts around us are paying more and servicing similar student demographics. Without a significant increase in my salary, I will not be teaching in this district in In talking with members, this was a common refrain, we need second jobs to survive. It is beyond time to show educators in Tacoma the respect we deserve and give us the compensation we have earned. Thank you.
Liz Fortson, followed by Daryl Penny.
Good evening. The last time I spoke at a school board meeting, which was a month or two ago, I gave you an assignment. I would like to know who completed the assignment, or started it, or even discussed it. It's really disappointing. The assignment was, get a bucket somewhere downtown, superintendent, assistant superintendents, and all directors, every teacher's name and their classroom will be in the bucket. You draw, and you spend three days in our classrooms. The problem is that the relationship between the school board and CAB and the staff is fractured. There is not trust between us, and there should be. Let me give you a couple of examples. You were just talking recently about class size ratios that are mandated by the state, and how you factor into that, into that equation, all certificated staff in a building, and that it does not reflect the class size per se. That's not the impression the public has. When you put the numbers out to the public, you're saying there's a seventeen to one ratio. As a parent, if my children's school district put out that there's a seventeen to one ratio, I expect seventeen kids in the class. And when they come home and tell me, no mom, there's thirty, I'm jumping up and down on somebody's head, because that's not what I was told. Transparency. Another example was when Rainwright Elementary closed, your reason was, we can't afford to maintain it. Then you turn around and build it bigger and better than ever. It doesn't matter what bucket it came out of, my point goes to intent. You can never convince me that a capital project of that size was not already in the planning. And yet you expect us to believe the numbers you're giving us. It's like, my interpretation for me of your transparency is, do you have a budget? Yes. Will you show us? Yes. When? Soon. You're giving us clear answers, but you're not giving us any information. As one of the largest districts in the state, you have the opportunity to set the standards of appropriate pay for teachers. Which example will be your legacy? Thank you.
Daryl Penny, followed by Penny Kramer.
Okay, Daryl Penny, retiring at the end of August, from Foss. So, not talking about the budget, so Justina Johnson, Patrick Johnson, you know, part of your staff is doing a great job talking about establishing relationships and so forth between teachers and their students, and addressing equity, restorative justice, and, you know, getting to know the students. And it made me wonder, you know, how much do our members of the board know the educators that work in this district and what's happening? Because I know some of the things that have happened, you know, just at the one school I've been to for the past twenty-two years, it's often appears that what's happening up in the schools is, you're not aware of what's going on down in the buildings, and what people are actually going through. And the only time you ever hear about anything that's going on is when people get together like this, and comes to your meeting and make comments. Now, there are three members of the board that I know very well, and not from being here, because, you know, we, they've been down to the building where I was, and at other venues that involved district committee work and so forth and all. But the rest of you, I don't know. And I think for the most part, you know, a good portion of the Tacoma educators don't know who you are. And I'm thinking it would be a great idea for you to come down to the buildings, and go out to the buildings, and talk to the people who are trying to get the work done that you're trying, you know, that you want done, to meet state requirements, and, you know, address the every student every day thing that we have, so that you get a good feel about what's really going on, and so that we can feel that you truly understand what's going on. Not just by having your committee members come in, give you your briefings and so forth, and you sit down and look at your numbers. It's a number thing again. And you need to come down, talk to the staff, and really experience what's going on with us. So, that's it.
Penny Kramer, followed by Tina Taylor.
Hi, I'm Penny Kramer, a Tacoma resident with two children at Bryant-Montessori, where I also work as the music teacher. I just completed my twentieth year of teaching and my fifth year here. I've taught in public and private schools, both large, Miami Dade, Florida, and small in rural southern Idaho. I've been attending board meetings and listening and learning and researching. If you truly want every student every day, then the budget needs to reflect that motto. Director Heinz said he wanted teachers' input about what works and doesn't in the classroom, so here goes. Keep celebrating student and staff successes. Keep putting money into whole child and social emotional learning. Keep hiring more counselors and family liaisons. Keep advocating for our students with our legislators. Keep asking for building bonds. Here I mentioned that Bryant's building is old and has seven portables with two more on the way. Start speeding up the hiring process, especially for substitutes, so that we can get quality people hired quickly. Start realizing that equity does not mean equal resources. Start with a formula, and then be flexible to make sure that schools get the resources needed to serve their students. For example, Bryant-Montessori, Geiger-Montessori, and Rainwright intermediate school are all innovative. Geiger is pre-K to five, Bryant is pre-K to eight, and Rainwright is fourth through eighth. We don't fit into the preschool, elementary, or middle school formulas. Please staff these students, these schools according to the diversity of the students served. Start putting additional funding towards PE, music, and the arts, all of which make for healthier, happier citizens. Stop paying for a bloated central administration. In the 2017-18 school year, spending for CAB was seven point two-five percent, while teaching activities was fifty-four percent. Seattle was five point nine percent administration and sixty-two percent teaching, and Spokane was four point eight percent administration and fifty-eight percent teaching. Larger districts spend less on administration, so can we. Stop increasing the pay of our superintendent, it's already one of the top five in the state. Stop doing remodeling projects at CAB, like the human resources floor, and put the money where people do the work. Remember Bryant's building situation? Stop hiring instructional coaches in K five, I'm sorry, K three. Counting coaches as K three staff to reduce the student-teacher ratio is a trick. It doesn't actually reduce class sizes. Having a certificated teacher with a classroom of their own does. Stop wasting our time with my time. It's a time eater for teachers, paras, and especially our office managers, who have to keep track of everyone's my time. Stop making paras have to clock in and out. With my time, paras often clock out and then go back to work to prepare for the following day. The only reason to ask paras to clock in and out is if you are willing to pay them for the hours they actually work. Stop making certificated staff document our extra hours. We work more than we document. Just pay us. It'll save everyone time and energy, which then can be devoted to our students. And finally, stop listening to the doom and gloom forecasts from district officials. The Washington State School Directors Association recommends four percent ending fund balance.
Thank you.
It's time to put that money where the work is being done, every student, every day.
Tina Taylor. Tina Taylor, followed by Peter Rutter.
Hi, I'm Tina Taylor. I am a Tacoma resident, a taxpayer, and a voter. I also happen to be a fourth and fifth grade teacher at Bryant-Montessori, and I also happen to be the stadium zone rep, so I'm on my union exec board. Excellent words, Penny. That fits nicely with what I wanted to say, in a time when we're looking at fiscal responsibility as a district. I've been spending a lot of time on the OSPI website with the school apportionment and financial services reports, the F-195 budget report, write that down, look it up yourself. You don't have to take my word for this. I noticed something striking about our budget and Spokane's budget. We have virtually identical budgets, about four hundred and twenty million, this is for the seventeen-18 school year. We have virtually identical student numbers, virtually identical staff numbers. Two things stand out when I'm looking at the budget overview. One is that Spokane gets central administration done for twenty million dollars. Tacoma spends thirty million. And I'm wondering what we're getting for ten million more dollars. And I also noticed, this is probably not related, but it sure could be, that spending on teaching activities in Spokane is just about ten million greater than what we spend here in Tacoma. I think these things are related. You can look it up for yourself, though, you don't have to take my word for it. So I'm just saying, when we're looking at rifts, and we're looking at cuts, and we're looking at belt tightening, these people in the room, wearing our red shirts, have been tightening our belts. We've been doing it for decades. The state has finally given you money to pass through to us for our salaries. I've spoken directly with Jeannie Darnell and Lori Jenkins. They've said forty-six million for salaries. They've said fifteen percent for certificated staff, thirty-five percent for classified staff. They have said these words publicly, repeatedly, and sometimes in writing. So I think when you hear that, you understand why we're here, why it's our turn. Okay, take a look at where else you can make changes and cuts. Give us what we have coming. Thank you.
My name is Peter Rutter. I teach Algebra III, IV, Precalculus, Calculus, and Circuit Design at the New Idea School on Park Ave. At IDEA, our teachers are developing curriculum that is project-based, aligned to state standards, and multidisciplinary, to help prepare our students for the challenges they face in an ever-changing world. This is my tenth year of teaching, and my third at IDEA, and I've never been so excited for an upcoming school year. On a personal note, my wife and I are expecting our second child in September. We have learned that our son will be born with a cleft lip and palate, which will require multiple surgeries starting at just a few months of age. Needless to say, I have a lot on my plate this year. With this new one in the family, my wife will be staying home while we live off of one income. We anticipated this change, and we made every financial decision in preparation for this phase of our life together. We purchased a home in a low-income neighborhood in Parkland, consolidated and reduced the interest rate on student loans, canceled our cable bill, moved to a cellphone plan that just cost twelve dollars a month. I drive a ninety-nine Camry with over two hundred thousand, uh, two hundred, two hundred thousand miles. Despite all this, the numbers still don't add up. My salary covers the cost of our mortgage, insurance, and thank you for the medical insurance, my child will need it, utilities, food, and gas, and that's it. There's no room left in the budget for student loans, or car payment, or home repairs, charitable giving, security, or any entertainment. Like many teachers, I also invest my own money into classroom supplies, usually over a thousand dollars a year. At my current rate of pay, the only way we can pay our bills is to run a business while I teach full-time. This is what I do. I have split my time between creating curriculum and preparing amazing lessons, and fulfilling orders, and answering customer questions. And I would really like just to be a teacher. Thank you.
That is the end of our public comment. I just have one question for Ms. Medina. Can you clarify for me if we get any guidance from the state on the class size calculation?
Yes, and I did talk to it a little while you were not at the DIAS. Where, where, our, our class size calculation is based off of whether you're sitting in, it's based off of what we report on the S-275, is where teachers are coded, and you have to fall into a certain duty route or coding of types of teachers, and you have to have a certain program code that the state allocates, is either basic education or special education. And those two factors determine whether, and you have to have a grade grouping of K one, two, or three. And those three factors determine whether or not you're counted towards the requirement of seventeen to one or not.
Okay.
And that includes specialists, that includes PE teachers, that includes some of our special education teachers, and the regular basic education teachers that are either in the classroom or floating throughout.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
That will move on to item number nine, consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
I move adoption.
Second.
Any questions about the consent agenda? All those in favor of adopting the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is adopted. Moving on to number ten, policy matters, there are no policy matters tonight. Number eleven, quarterly financial update. Presentations on the financial health of the district will be made during regular board meetings on a quarterly basis. Monthly financial statements can be found on the district website at tacomaschools.org, then to Abao, and then to Finance. Item number twelve, curriculum instruction, twelve point one, approval of the 2018-19 Head Start Continuation Grant application.
The deputy superintendent on behalf of the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning recommends the Board of Directors approve the 2018-19 Head Start Continuation Grant Application, one zero C H zero one nine four, in the amount of six million one hundred and fifty-one thousand seven hundred and eighty-three dollars. Funding source, Head Start.
I move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments about this item? All those in favor of adopting item twelve point one signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is adopted. Item twelve point two, approval of inter-district cooperative agreement for the financing and operation of the Pierce County Skill Center.
The Assistant Superintendent of K-12 Support recommends that the Board of Directors approve the ten-year inter-district cooperative agreement for the financing and operations of the Pierce County Skill Center, funding source, career, and technical education budget.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments?
I just had a comment. I imagine it said, starting in 2008, so was that a ten-year budget, approval at that time also?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments? All those in favor of adopting item twelve point two signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is adopted. Item twelve point three, authorization to enter into contract with, with services with Fairfax Hospital DBA Northwest School of Innovative Learning, 2018-19.
The Deputy Superintendent on behalf of the Assistant Superintendent of Student Support Services recommends that the Board of Directors authorize the superintendent enter into a contract for services with Fairfax Hospital D slash B slash A Northwest School of Innovative Learning for the 2018-19 school year, and authorize the superintendent to engage in any final negotiation of terms as necessary.
I move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions about this item? All those in favor of adopting item twelve point three signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is adopted. Item twelve point four, approval of the University of Washington College and the High School Inter-Agency Agreement for 2018-2019.
The Assistant Superintendent of K-12 Support on behalf of the Executive Director of Secondary Education recommends that the Board of Directors approve the inter-agency agreement between the University of Washington and Tacoma Public Schools for the 2018-19 school year, funding source, payment by students directly to the University of Washington.
I move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments about this item, Director Heinz?
Thank you. In the fiscal implication, it says that the school or district may choose to collect funds from its students or pay on behalf of students. How do we make that determination?
We do not pay on behalf of students. We actually, there's two boxes to check, we check the other box.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of adopting item twelve point four signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is adopted. Moving on to item thirteen, business matters. Thirteen point one, approval of twenty-seven- 13.1, approval of 2017-18 Fixed Asset Inventory Reconciliation for all District Locations.
The Chief Financial Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve the write-off of the assets identified on the, as missing, on the 2017-18 inventory when the books are closed for the 2017-18 fiscal year.
I move approval.
I'm sorry, I wasn't quite done. Sorry. The actual amount of the write-off will be reported to the Board by January 2019. Further, it is recommended that the principals and staff of the 20, oh, 28 locations achieving perfect inventories be commended for their excellent stewardship of district property.
Now I move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments about item 13.1? Director Heinz?
Thank you. When I looked at the numbers, it said that, well, I looked at them year over year, and I was curious as to the, not only the increase in the number of items. Last year it was 373, for a total of 39,000, which I still think is, in the context of 47,000, is pretty good, but we should know where everything is all the time. Why, when it has jumped to 492 items this year, has the amount doubled to 74,000? Are we, are, are we no longer accounting for things like computers and higher value, or what's the attribution for the doubling of the loss?
It's, part of the increase is, is due to the value of the assets that we're losing. We're, we're counting for about 50,000 assets, which includes every device over $300, so it just reflects that newer equipment is being lost or stolen.
Do, do we know, are those computers, are those iPads, are those?
We have the list of what the assets are.
We have a complete list of what's missing. And the barcode that was on it.
And when you look at that list, are there items that jump, is there a theme to what's on that list?
There, there are a lot.
Do we need to get better at protecting computers and those sorts of things?
A lot of small devices are missing. Laptops and peripheral devices.
Okay. I ask because I wonder if we may need a different policy so that we can correct an issue that seems to be increasing. I, I don't want to come back next year and now it's $150,000, and we just keep because those are attractive things that walk away. Let's, let's get this thing fixed while it's still small.
Yes, and we, we intend to take a proposal to the superintendent on potential financial ramifications to buildings where there are missing assets. Because we feel that we're to the point where our, we've exhausted our remedies. And we've tried hand-holding, we've tried scolding, we've tried, we've tried a lot of different things over the years, and we actually did, we fared worse with the more intensive program that we did this last year.
And I appreciate that because it says 72% of the overall missing total is attributed to 11 locations.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other comments? All those in favor of adopting item 13.1 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is adopted. Item 13.2, approval of agreement between Tacoma School District Number 10 and Pierce Transit.
The Chief Financial Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve the agreement with Pierce Transit for 3,525 org passport cards in the amount of $411,103.64 for the 18-19 school year.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments about this item? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting item 13.2 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is adopted. Item 13.3, approval of contracts for purchase of student chairs from diversification work point.
The Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors authorize the superintendent to negotiate and award a contract for securing the purchase of student chairs for a diversification work point as needed.
I move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments about item 13.3? Director Heinz?
Well, I'd just like to note, I, I appreciate the diligence that's occurring under your leadership in the department when I see that in the past, we've paid as much as 50% more. We, we need to be as efficient and as effective in every way that we can. And so thank you for continuing to look for ways where we're, we are not compromising, but we're getting smarter with our procurement.
Thank you. Team effort.
All those, oh, any additional comments? All those in favor of adopting item 13.3 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is adopted. Item 13.4, approval of Metro Parks and Tacoma Public Schools Inter-Local Agreement for 2018-19 school year.
The Assistant Superintendent of K-12 Support recommends that the Board of Directors approve the inter-local agreement with Metro Parks Tacoma for the Mary Lyon Elementary School Late Arrival Program for the 2017-18 school year.
I'll move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments about this item? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting item 13.4 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is adopted. Item 13.5, award of dairy contract for Liberty Distributing.
The Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors award the contract for dairy products to Liberty Distributing and authorize superintendent to award and sign a contract for the period of September 1st, 2018 through August 31st, 2023.
I'll move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions about this item? Director Heinz?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for indulging me. Who is the, does Liberty supply the milk? Are, are we locally sourcing, and then they're just distributing it? Or is this milk, is this out-of-area milk that's coming in?
To better answer that question, I'm going to look towards Steve Demo.
Okay, Kent Valley, excellent, thank you.
Any other questions?
I would just, I appreciate us saving money. I also want us, whenever possible, to give those, award those contracts to local vendors. So thank you for doing both, saving us money and making certain that we're keeping those resources local.
Liberty Distribution is located in Plup as well.
Okay, great, thank you.
All those in favor of adopting item 13.5 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is adopted. Item 13.6, approval of contract addendum number two with ASL Professionals for American Sign Language Interpreting Services for the 2017-18 school year.
The Human Resources Director on behalf of the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources recommends that the Board of Directors approve Contract Addendum Number Two with ASL Professionals for the 2017-18 school year, Contract Number TSD-16-006. Funding source: ADA Budget.
I'll move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions about this item? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting item 13.6 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, the motion is adopted. Item 13.7, approval of Microsoft Consulting Services Year-One Contract for Student Dashboard Software Development.
Chief Information Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve the district enter into a contract with Microsoft Consulting Services in the amount of $550,000 for year one to support development of a student dashboard. Funding source: Student Stewart Foundation Grant and Tech Levy Funds.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments about item 13.7? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting item 13.7 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is adopted. Thank you. So with that, we'll move on to item 14, Other Business. Item 14.1, Adoption of Resolution Number 2043, authorizing the sale of three Camp Taylor parcels to YMCA Seattle.
The Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors adopt Resolution Number 2043 and approve the sale of three parcels of real property associated with Camp Taylor to YMCA Seattle.
I'll move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions about item 14.1? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting item 14.1 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is adopted. Item 14.2, Adoption of Board Resolution Number 2043 regarding the district's offering of a lease to MultiCare Health Systems to operate a school-based health clinic at Oakland High School beginning August 2018.
So I just like to say I'm recusing myself because I work for MultiCare.
Thank you. The superintendent recommends the Board adopt Board Resolution 2044 regarding the district's offering of a lease to MultiCare Health System to operate a school-based health clinic at Oakland High School beginning August 2018. I'll move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions about item 14.2? Director Heinz?
I'd just like to thank MultiCare, Lois Bernstein and her team. This is an innovative project that I believe is going to deliver a much-needed service. And their ability to work with us, providing the staff, all of the resources that they're making an investment to, to the benefit of our students and families is, is tremendous. And, and I think the superintendent, her team, this is not an easy project to pull together, and I'm excited to get this underway.
I'd like to thank Renee Trueblood and her team. They're the ones that really got us to yes on this, and we really appreciate the work you did. We know you put a lot of energy into it, so thank you.
Thank you so much. The credit really goes to Deputy Superintendent Heidi Maynard, who's here tonight. Thank you Heidi for everything you've done.
Deputy Superintendent Heidi.
So with that, it's been moved and seconded, and with no additional questions or comments. All those in favor of adopting item 14.2 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So the motion is adopted at 3 to 0, with the record showing that Director Leon has abstained, or has recused himself. Item number 15, Report to the Board, Strategic Benchmark Annual Report on Safety and School Climate.
Good evening. We have a, what about nine slides tonight?
I believe so.
Nine slides to share with you. It's an annual report on the climate survey, under our strategic goal of safety, which reads, "All schools will create and maintain safe learning environments that promote excellent academic achievement." Tonight specifically, we are going to be looking at the climate survey and the priority benchmark around the number of students, staff, and parents who completed the climate survey. So I'm going to turn this over to Director Laura Allen, and she's going to walk us through some data that she wants to share with you tonight, so take it away.
Thank you. So for students, when the benchmarks were updated in 2015, student life moved to administering the climate survey every other year, alternating with the Healthy Youth Survey. The survey was administered this past year in March of 2018 to students in grades 4 through 12. 2,324 more students completed the survey in 2018, this year, than previously. We have provided student group data for you in the appendix. For staff, staff completing the survey increased this year by 278. The climate survey was promoted through Level Directors, emails with weekly participation rates, principals, TWCI Tuesdays, the Innovators, on the Hub, every way we could think of. For parents, we did see a decrease in 2018 by 1,213. The survey was released after parent, student-parent conferences this year, which accounts for this decrease. Robocalls were made, as well as flyers sent to the schools. Families could complete the survey electronically via our website or on hard copies provided to each school in their front office. In 2019, when the survey is administered again, it will coincide with parent-teacher conferences. Overall, when you add parent, teacher, and student surveys, over 1,300 more were completed in 2018. The climate survey was not, again, will be released in the future to ensure that more parents have the opportunity to take that. Paper copies were offered, however, we found that almost 80% of surveys, including parents, were completed online. Climate surveys were promoted, again, through the Innovator, TWCI Tuesdays, Level Directors, and were available in English, Spanish, Korean, and Vietnamese versions. So for next steps, in the July 13th Friday Report, there are links to the survey results for your review. Each of our site principals received a hard copy of the executive summary in a binder, and also an electric version in, of a full report from DART. Cabinet will schedule time to review all findings in an upcoming meeting. The TWCI team will use the data to inform next steps for planning. And all schools will be encouraged to utilize the data from the report to develop action steps in the 2018-19 Continuous Achievement Plan. Thank you.
Any questions?
And any questions from the Board? Director Winsko?
Yeah, so I have a question about putting this form out at parent-teacher conferences because that's in December, and it's pretty early in the year, for anybody to really have any, any kind of opinion about things. I think there probably should be a better way in the spring, maybe at the spring concerts, or, you know, a lot of schools have those spring programs, so.
That's a really good idea.
Different way.
I think that's a great idea. We'll pass that along.
Thank you.
There's other parent events going on in the springtime that we can access as well.
Thank you.
Director Heinz?
Yeah, I had a question in the appendix on Slide 10. When we look at staff by subgroup, there's, it's significantly more female respondents than male. What's the representation of our male teachers to female teachers? What's the percent?
I don't know off the top of my head of teachers specifically, but overall staff, 72% of the population of the employees in the Tacoma Public Schools is female.
Any, is there follow-up? I see your thinking face.
I just, it's such a disproportionate number. I guess I would be interested to see this represented as a percent of total, rather than just in the aggregate. So if, if it's 422 out of 500, we're doing pretty well. And if it's 422 out of 1,500, then we've got some work to do.
You mean out of the percent of the total staff that we have? Like what percentage of our male staff?
Exactly, so that we know what, what the 422 from a percent, so it's not just in the aggregate of who participated, but then as a percent of, as a percent of the total population.
Got it.
Because I don't know if 422 is good or bad. I don't know if it indicates a high level of participation or a low level of participation. I just see that it's disproportionate to the number of females that took the survey.
So approximately, when this report was pulled, which just did a couple days ago, there were 825 male employees. So you have nearly 50% of the male population responding. And you have 2,298 female employees, so over half as well.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? I just have one comment. Did you have a follow-up, Director Winsko?
No.
Okay, I just have one comment. As a parent, I took the survey, but I almost missed it. So I think that you've already highlighted some things that we can do better next year with regard to getting the survey in the hands of parents. But I just recall, two years ago when we did this, Amanda Scott-Thomas and team really being involved in the outreach and trying to get the word out. I remember one of her presentations including some reference to the climate survey. So I think it's really important to hear that voice. Just as, and I know that we moved to a different survey tool a couple of years ago too. I think I was still really new on the board, so that was part of my early memory of discussions. But just, I just feel like it still needs some refinement, just having taken it. There's, for example, there's one question that asks something to the effect of how do you prefer to be contacted? Something in that vein, but it depends on the, what you're contacting me for. So I just think that as we think about how to get the best information and feedback from our parents and staff too, I didn't have the opportunity to take those forms of the survey. But just really drilling down to really specific questions that help really move us forward. Because if you're contacting me about something that you just discipline, that's what, I want a phone call. If you're sending me some information about events coming up, text me or email me. So that's just one example, but there's a few points in the questions where I would have.
have hoped that we could frame it differently so that we can get better information from our parents. Thank you.
And we may need to have supplement surveys to get to some of that. So the work with the climate survey is this partnership with the Center for Educational Effectiveness, and so there is some wiggle room in that, but that doesn't stop us from, as an organization, doing some deeper work in some of those targeted areas about communication as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the report.
Thank you.
Item number sixteen, board comments and reports. Start at the, I'll start to my left with Director Wenskill.
Okay, I have a question about sports in the middle school.
About what?
Sports in the middle school. So it's been brought to my attention that we've changed the format for fall sports, where baseball and basketball are now in the fall, and that those are two popular sports, so the students need to choose. There's some disappointed students out there, so I would like to know why that is happening, and if it's set in stone, or it can be changed, would be, I'd be, want to know.
We can bring some of that back to you. There was a process to work with coaches and students about increasing accessibility, so more kids participating. Unfortunately, in any type of this situation, you're going to get some students that are going to have a conflict, but I can get you more details of that and who was involved in that process.
Okay. That's all, that's all I have to say right now.
Okay. Director Heinz?
Nothing this evening.
Director Leon?
Nothing.
And I also don't have a report tonight. Item number seventeen, announcement of future board meetings. Thursday, August twenty-third, 2018, the board will meet for a regular business meeting at six PM. Item number eighteen, executive session. The board of directors will meet in executive session with legal counsel for approximately thirty minutes to discuss potential litigation in accordance with RCW 423110. So with that, we will adjourn, or we will.
President Cobb, I had a clarifying question for the budget hearings. So I was planning to attend. How do we need to make certain, if there's a quorum? I'd like to go and listen to what the public has to say.
Actually, I would, too, so that's a good question. Are you trying to make sure we avoid a quorum?
I'm trying to make certain, do we need to notify it if, if we're going to show up?
No, you can show up and observe as long as you're not taking any action.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan.
So with that, the board will recess to executive session.